Is a deficit budget of about a million thirty thousand dollars. But again, it's going to look a whole lot different when we get to the April, May, June process. The state may have a budget by then, we may know what we're going to be getting in basic education subsidies, special ed subsidy, transportation, and so on and so forth. So that's kind of what I will submit to the board at a special meeting on January twenty seventh, which is the deadline to have this thing approved. I have advertised, there should have been an ad in the paper this morning. And then we'll put another ad saying that we are going to go for the referendum exceptions in the next couple of weeks. And again, we approve it the twenty seventh. And then I can get back into our regular budget process. And I've attached the budget calendar for you on the second page. It pretty much indicates the timetable that I'm working to at this point in time. I know there's been some discussion about committees, so on and so forth. If this changes, that's fine, we'll just adjust. But again, this is pretty typical of where we are. I'll be meeting with the administrators in early February. We'll go through our process, they'll tell me what they think they need. I'll incorporate that, and then we can start with budget sessions where the board can decide what they want in, what they want out. So that's fairly quickly, and it's a lot of numbers, and I apologize for that, but I did want to get it to you. Again, that is on display in my office for any person that wants to come in and take a look at it. Can I sit on the revenue and finance?
Okay, we're back to student affairs. Bottom of page four. Social event, Mrs. Pigza and Mrs. Noble, senior class advisors request permission to take the senior class to Cedar Point in Sandusky, Ohio, leave at eight AM, and return approximately eight PM on Thursday, May nineteenth. Costs will be paid by student-raised funds. And another social event, Ms. Lisa Leonberg, Edward City Phys Ed Advisor, the club requests permission to take the ECPE club to Seven Springs on Saturday, February sixth, two thousand sixteen. They'll depart at one PM, return approximately twelve AM. The cost will be paid by student-raised funds. Field trips, Mr. Scott Buffington, Lincoln History Club sponsor requests permission to take the History Club to the historic triangle, Williamsburg, Virginia. They'll leave at seven AM Saturday, May twenty first, two thousand sixteen, and return eight PM Tuesday, May twenty fourth. The cost will be paid for by student-raised funds. Comprehensive plan, two thousand sixteen, nineteen comp plan will be available on district website under the school board link at the top of the page. This will be displayed until the next board meeting here and also down at the public library. Require all school districts in Pennsylvania to do these. Our current plan will expire on June thirty, two thousand sixteen. A new plan will take effect sixteen, seventeen school year. Will be adopted in the February board meeting. Summary of the plan is attached, and also the original. I have a copy here, which we'll leave at the district office, and we'll send one down to the public library. It's about a hundred pages long, including the special ed comp plan for that also. Technology proposal, as you saw in December, a team here from the high school presented to the board about technology proposal for the sixteen, seventeen school year. And is now looking for guidance, because this is scheduling time for them. This is when Mr. Lape and the high school teachers figure out classes for next year, and start to organize that, and start getting students to think about what classes they're going to take. So it's very difficult to add classes later in April and May as, you know, as the budget gets going. So I guess they're kind of looking for guidance on what direction they need to go as far as that proposal.
Has anybody had any thoughts about what they had presented and their proposal? The funding for it? I mean, my biggest concern, and I'm sure everybody here is thinking the same thing, is that we don't have a budget. We don't know what we're going to get, and it's kind of hard to make commitments for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more when I'm sure the budget that was put together for us did not include anything extra. But has anybody had any thoughts about hiring another teacher, getting the lab up in the high school?
Commander Hartman.
Commander Hartman, right. One other boat, breaking things down, adding something?
Mr. Keely, would it be possible to have Mr. Setzenfan split time between the two labs? Teachers in third and fourth grade have already used the fan lab.
That is the plan.
That is the plan.
The plan is to split it between Perry, Hartman?
So the hundred and eighty thousand dollars, does that, what does that include?
That's primarily high school, but I need equipment for Hartman.
So this whole plan will include the high school?
I think I put fifty grand in for equipment for Hartman. Out of the one fifty, fifty that is for Hartman.
I mean, I really like the idea. I think it's something that will make our district distinct and separate ourselves from other school districts as to what we can offer. I mean, if we talk about turf, I think we can talk about, you know, bettering our education, so I mean, you have my support. That's, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but...
I have a question for you. I still don't understand, I know currently, fourth grade uses the lab at Perry. They go during science class. They don't go just specifically to go, they go in conjunction with science. And so I, and I know when you talked about it last year, you envisioned this place as a space where kids would come before school or after school or in their spare time and things like that. And have you found that that's actually the case? Or is this more of just, they go there during science class and that's it? So it's more like we have a science now with a lab instead of this being its own thing?
It's some of that. One of the things I said last year was I want these learning experiences to be more meaningful and aligned to the curriculum. One of the things that's starting to happen is the teachers are starting to use it to help differentiate their instruction. So I've got one teacher in particular who I'm thinking of. He had had his class go down to Mr. Setzenfan's room today. The other class, the other half of the class, he was differentiating instruction regarding math in their time while Mr. Setzenfan was directing their half. So that's starting to come around. Are we there yet, a hundred percent? Nope. But it's a process, we're trailblazing, we understand that. And it's tricky, and it's slippery, and it's difficult, and it's different. But it's getting there. But you're right, a lot of times, this is the science class. That's the easiest, probably most appropriate way to integrate the engineering process into education is through science applications. But other things are starting to come around as well.
And I think it's also important to realize that this isn't a one-year plan, a two-year plan, this is a five to ten-year plan where these kids are starting now in third and fourth grade. Now here's fifth and sixth grade, now here's seventy, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. It's going to be continuous years of education and hopefully going to produce some kind of engineer or scientist or something. That's like my vision of it.
To that point, the kids are getting trained, as are the teachers, in the way the lab works, the machinery, the equipment, the technology, the limitations. And as time progresses, they will be able to enter it and become more independent. Right now, they're guided and everything because we have so much stuff. They have to be guided a lot. We have things that, they're still in the, it's still in the package. We have not done any video production. And I told Scott, I can do video production, I'll be in. I don't know when I'm going to be in, I'm going to go in. But I got, you know, so there are things that are still in the package. We've got to unwrap so much stuff. So is it coming? Yes. But these kids, these kids are going to bring a certain level of expertise to it, and they're going to, I was talking to Scott today about how much different it's going to look next year than it does this year. And he's excited to expand on that knowledge and let kids sort of dictate where they want to go. They have an interest in this, let's try this, let's do that. We doing before-school, after-school stuff yet? Nope. But, you know, like I said, we're blazing a trail and we're trying, but there's no blueprint. There's no one else doing this. And I'm real proud of our efforts, but it's not, it's not there yet.
Did you ever think, I know you probably got asked this, about making it like a special, like taking library skills and library, making them happen one day? Because they're picking out their book, and then I know, they go through like a little reading or a little exercise. And actually, because I know the kids love it, and it is good, and I know you're not unwrapping things and doing things yet. If you would make that a special, it would make it, you know what I mean? It would make it better yet, because you're teaching them and...
See...
There's guaranteed time that they're all spending.
Yeah, they're being, everybody gets to be in this.
Everybody, everybody's getting an hour a week. I talked to Scott today. Every single homeroom's in there an hour a week, multiple, and there are a couple, couple hours a week. So the guaranteed time in the lab, I don't want to call it a guarantee, but he's telling me every week they're in there, every kid's in there every week. He said, "That's not a negotiable thing." That's what I told teachers, that's what I told him, I wanted it to happen. And he verified that for me today, that that is a fact. It's difficult to do that, like I said earlier, because you kind of lock yourself in. And when you lock yourself in on a half an hour, and you've got to rotate, and you've got to come in, you don't have that sort of overflow time. Mr. Baker's class was in there today, they're supposed to be done at three oh two. They weren't there until three seventeen, and they're running to catch their boxes. And if you had, like if it was earlier, and you had another class coming in, doesn't matter where you are, you've got to be done. So that sort of flexibility and that, it's, if it's a special, then everyone's coming in, and everyone's doing the same thing in fourth grade. And it does not make it that extended learning experience, that meaningful learning experience that's tied to curriculum, because then Scott's just going to dictate, we're doing this, 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 and this. But now, we have collaboration with the eleven teachers that are out there, and they're bringing him ideas, and they're working together. And a lot of that stuff, he pushes out to others, and it kind of all comes around. So I feel we, with the, with the special schedule, while we get sort of that on paper, everyone's guaranteed to be in here, we lose the flexibility in the things that make it really special.
And I think to speak to that is, whenever, if you do make it a special, then it's considered special. It's considered Jim art music. This, I don't see this as a special, I see this as advancement in our curriculum and our, what we have to offer. It's not just a special, it's better than a special. That's just the way I see it.
As long as everyone gets a chance to go.
Right, but I think it's also, it's what you make of it.
Just as long as every teacher is utilizing it.
And I've been assured they have, and you guys have kids there, is that, is that the case? I mean, because I've been told...
Oh, my kid goes all the time, but my kid got a very special teacher. If you want to, need to be honest with you, he's top, top notch. So mine is going, but I don't know if everybody else's is.
I know mine has been there a few times, but not one.
I'm told, I'm told hour a week, every homeroom, hour a week. That's what I was told today.
When, when though, next year, if we get WW two, as you call it, in there and...
Two point O, I changed it, two point O.
Oh, okay.
I'm upgrading to two point O.
Then Mr. S., as I like to call him, because his name is too hard to pronounce, is now at Hartman half the time. So now, I don't see why, it couldn't be a special in some regards, and I don't see why it has to be the same thing taught to each class. But the half the time that they're there, that classroom is still open for those teachers to utilize it and to make it that space that, that they want to make it and, you know, carry that science project into that lab, because there is still time in there to do it, because half the time, he won't be there anyway. I would, I, and I've said this from the beginning, I would like to see it whereas the kids have, you know, more equal time, because we do know that some of the teachers are more tech savvy, and they make better use of things, which they're doing that in their, their homerooms. I mean, they don't even need that room to do a lot of the things that they do. That's why I'd like to see it become a special, just because I, it guarantees all those kids that time. And then the extra time that that lab is open can still be scheduled in. Because now, you know, if we manage to get the upgrade to point, what did you just call it?
Two point O.
Two point O, then, you know, Mr. Setzen, well, Fan, Colin?
Fan.
Fan, won't be, you know, half his time and half the place.
I still, in my opinion, the flexibility is worth, the risk is worth the reward to keep it as it is with the knowledge that, you know, there's going to be times when the lab is not occupied by him, and the teachers, especially at Perry, will now be more prepared to go in there and finish the stuff that they've already started. At Hartman, it's going to be brand-new can of worms for them, and they're not going to be as out to do that. One of the things that I have not, I did not anticipate was the, the amount of professional collaboration between Mr. Scotchless, Mr. Setzenfan. They are working hand-in-hand on this, and they are putting a lot of things together, and these kids are being able to piggyback one project on top of another in their real, really building. And I talked to Scott today for a long extended time. I wanted to know, with the special schedule next year, you want me to get Matt at the building when you're there? Or do you want me to get him when you're not there? And we kind of decided, sort of fifty-fifty, because they piggyback sometimes, but they also finish each other's stuff sometimes. So it's, there's, there's no right answer. But I, I like the way we do it with the flexibility that we have.
The money to purchase that equipment, it was purchased with a grant. Does that equipment all have to stay at Perry? Is there a time reference?
I don't believe there's a time. It was spent under the Title I spending guidelines, which means it resides there. Now that being said, this doesn't help Hartman, but we got the opportunity to apply for that grant because we were named a distinguished Title I school. We've not received notification at this point, we had already done that last year. But we may be eligible to apply for that innovative grant again this coming year. Again, as that comes down the pipeline, we'll let you know. But it would be pretty neat to get fifty thousand dollars.
But it wouldn't have to go back to Perry since that's your...
That's where, yes, that's where it is.
And that's, that's what my issue is. I'm not sure if everybody has looked over this proposed cost list that he had given to us. I think, hopefully, girls, no, it's not in this packet. This was given to us last month, and I, did you, you've got one? I was going to say, I tried to make sure. We need to make sure everybody gets another copy of this so that we can try to come up with some kind of a plan so that we can give them direction.
Would you want to pull the board and ask them? Is this, he's, you got to know, right?
Be nice.
Are you, no, I mean, we can still break this down too, between Hartman and Lincoln's too, can we not? I mean...
Is everything on there an absolute must?
Well, I just think if you do make the decision to go Lincoln, you have to go Hartman, because then there's a gap. I mean, you can't go with one without the other.
But I mean, like every single piece of equipment is an absolute...
Can you look at the list that Jen...
I mean, what we did at Lincoln is very similar to what we purchased at Perry, so...
Right, but like Mr. Keely has said, they're not utilizing all that equipment yet. So I don't see the, forgive me, but if we can break it down and get you some of the equipment to start out with, and then build on it every year, because some of the stuff you said, they're not even utilizing it yet, so why do we need to put certain things in?
I will say this, when it comes to that budget, we, I harvested some pieces of furniture and other things from Lincoln, like the old tables that were in the ceramics room that those now live at Perry. That was an expense we did not encounter at all. So there are things that sort of migrated and did not find their way to the budget. Those things don't exist anymore to pull from somewhere.
Right, but you have a 3D printer for sixty-five hundred here. When I, when I was at the conference, they shipped, there were printers everywhere, and they weren't sixty-five hundred. They ranged anywhere from a thousand to three thousand dollars. So this to me is high. Why are we, why are we budgeting at sixty-five hundred and not at, you know, a different model? I mean, these were school-focused 3D printers. So I, I mean, I'm just, I'm looking at these and thinking, well, okay, if we can get you a 3D printer, we can get you another Chromebook cart, and we can get you some of these things, but, you know, maybe not the engraver. I mean, if you didn't get the engraver for the first year, and we can maybe get that to you next year, next year's budget, and we can still make it a workable lab with, you know, the Makerspace, what do you want to call it, cabinets, which, can we break those down and do them ourselves instead of buying the actual cabinets by what's inside them? Because the things that I saw when I was speaking with Mr. Setzenfan, the screwdrivers were already stripped out. And, you know, some of the stuff wasn't, I mean, maybe we can buy higher quality of the things that he knows that he needs and break it down so that we don't have quite the expense and do it over a two-year period, funding the lab, but getting the things necessary for it up and running for these kids, what, the things they've already used. So, I mean, it's not everything, but it's kind of a win-win, and at least we're on the, we're on the playing field.
I'm not going to turn my nose up at any money towards a proposal, to put it at Hartman, to be completely honest with you. And, and to be honest, if we get the money, I wouldn't promise we're going to buy all those things that were on there from the get-go. I changed my mind on the things that we bought at Perry, and I put that stuff together very quickly, because that's what we had to do. But I would really involve Scott and Matt and finalize the proposal. Honestly, what I was looking for was a sum of money, and I'm not turning my nose up at any of that, so...
And for, you can nitpick all you want on equipment at the high school.
Well, that was a different story.
It comes down to hiring a teacher.
Right.
Nothing could happen unless you have a personnel, so...
And it says annual estimated cost is twenty thousand, but you have to add in that extra teacher.
Right.
That's what it is.
Sixty-one plus...
So it's eighty-one thousand, not twenty thousand.
Right. Now, I also got a phone call today from Earl Marshall, and she, I believe, has already been in to speak to you. She told me, she's spoken to John, and she had mentioned having a, basically a marketing plan for the engineering program, Makerspace, I don't know, whatever you want to call it, upgrade two point O. And basically going around to the community and having a price tag. Well, we sat down, or they sat down, and they came up with the list. We have a laser printer or a 3D printer, and it's this much. If you'd like to donate, you buy the printer, we put your name on it. Or if you want to buy a whole room, it's, you know, twenty thousand dollars, maybe three thousand dollars for a printer, so much for this, so much for that, and let the people in the community buy into the program. I thought it was a wonderful idea. I wish we would have heard that last year, so that we could have been working on this as we've gone.
Even, even beating on a few doors last year, I already got seventeen thousand dollars towards the high school.
Right.
So that's money that's in-house, just by me running and begging a little bit. If we really push hard with some naming rights, I think there are a couple larger businesses in town that would be willing to hopefully invest enough for the high school and help defray some of the costs of the elementary.
And I also think that these local companies and organizations are looking for some kind of commitment, though, from the school.
Right, well, that would be the teacher and the, you know what I mean? That's us committing to the teacher and that reoccurring fee, which is in a little price tag, because, I mean, we're right now looking at eighty-five thousand, so, I mean, and us still putting some more into it. But I thought that, that idea was a wonderful idea, because that gets the community back involved. That's giving them a chance to participate in this program, and that's kind of what we want to do, is to bring the community in, and, and this is for such a great cause. So, you know, my only fear is that hearing about it so late in the game, will we have enough time to pull it together? If we hire the teacher, and we have some of the fundamental things purchased, will we be able to get the rest of the community involved quickly enough to have it up and ready for September or August, I should say?
Well, like you said, I mean, even if you make it a two-year plan, then we can...
I've talked to a lot of larger school districts out east that have, when we talked about X number of curriculum directors, they have seven to work with. They, they piecemeal a lot of these programs. I'm not saying that's a wise idea to piecemeal. I think you need a core base of equipment to make a Makerspace a Makerspace. What we have to do is, we can, we can add those, obviously, add those machines and upgrade those machines over time, but you do have to start with something. Hopefully, the bit of money that I brought in, plus leaning on a couple other businesses, gets us at least the lab up, up to the high school.
Right.
And we do need that commitment on the end to make sure it goes through.
John, have you been down to South Payette to see theirs?
Sure have.
Okay, because theirs is fully up and operational for, I know it's all the way through to the elementary school.
Yes.
Because I made the mistake of mentioning STEM at Christmas, and my grandchildren were both screaming at me. It's STEAM, it's STEAM.
That's where they do it.
They go every day.
Yes. Yeah, I've been, we've done some principal academy work with South Payette. They do, they, the funding structure and sources, they have companies that are coming in, working with them to do this. Also, just been to Elizabeth Ford, look at what they do. Again, if we make that commitment and move forward with this, it's going to springboard us ahead of a lot of districts out there with a lot more money invested in this with a better plan already. So we are definitely heading down the right path with this. We just have to bring it together. It's a bit of to get the schedule together, and we need to make it make sense.
Right, and the high school, I mean, when you get the teacher, then you have teacher, kids in there for a set amount of time. The elementary, that's, I think, the biggest focus. Like, you know, you hear somebody say they're in there every day. That's the kind of thing we want to see. They're in there every day, they're being challenged every day, or they're using that philosophy every day, not an hour a week. And, you know, then it becomes, oh, that money is so well-spent. And I think if we all had extra money and we had a budget to work with, it would be easy here. Get two, three, how many do we need to get them all in there? But, you know, it's the, I guess it's finding that balance of how do we best use the resources we have to get the kids in there as much as we can. I'm all for moving ahead with the high school, I have been since I heard about it. I, I just think that, you know, we have to be realistic in what we're spending, and if we can utilize the community in that way, and, and again, that helps bring them aboard, and that's one of my big focuses this year is, is public relations and the community. I would like to do that. I think it's a great opportunity for our district and for, you know, a lot of the community.
But as far as locking into something, I would like us to fully fund Hartman, get Hartman running, and then this year, during the year, work on getting Lincoln up and running the next year. So it's a continual thing, instead of skipping around.
Right. I think that, and I may be wrong in this, but I think Hartman can be done for much less than, they have fifty-two thousand. I mean, you take that one thing off that laser, and he says he's not even sure what he wants. A laser engraver's twelve-five. I mean, I think we can get the lab up and running for, I'm sure he can do it for my thirty, thirty-five, from what I'm looking at. I mean, he's going to take what money we allocate, and he's going to get at least what they have at Perry there so that they aren't missing a beat. And a lot of that, I'm sorry, it comes down to the teachers and what they're, what they're doing with it, because they're amazing.
I mean, do you know that they're not utilizing at Perry a lot?
Again, I know they're not using the video production stuff at all. They just started using the Arduino, the electronic stuff.
Sewing machines, I don't think we're done out.
We don't...
Or the lasers.
The lasers, right.
No.
We don't have laser engraving.
They have the vinyl.
We punted on that.
Oh.
They did the vinyl.
Yeah.
Do there, there are a few things we could add in, say, the following year? It doesn't all have to be there the first year, though. That was my first question.
Yeah.
Is this a must-have?
Again, I think my, the, the number I'm looking at, there's going to be a certain number that comes out that we did not have to spend at Perry, because I was able to harvest stuff that we already had, and those are now going to sort of be hidden expenses. I don't know what tables like that would be, what would cost now, but if we're buying new tables, they're heavy, they're put together, that's what you need. If I get six or seven of those, it's going to be a chunk of money. I'm going to need thirty stools. There's, there's a bunch of things that come there. Again, I'm not turning my nose up at any amount of money, I'm not saying that at all. But we spent fifty thousand dollars purely on STEM, STEAM equipment. We didn't buy any furniture, we did it all like that. You know, I don't know if I put professional development on that list or not, but we had the people come in. That's, that's such a valuable thing to do. So I understand if, if you say I can have thirty-five, that's great. It's not going to be just like Perry, that's great too. I'm not turning my nose up at any of that. I just know that I started with fifty there, fifty seemed like a great number to come out with.
I think from even like a PR perspective is that if we're going to make a commitment, I think we need to make a commitment, and that starts by saying we have this in our third, fourth grade building, our fifth, sixth grade building, and our high school. This is a program that we are committed to, that we want to develop, and it's an ongoing process. If we, if we do a half effort, it's an effort, but it's not going to, it's not going to do what I think, what I think it can do. And so that's why, I mean, my support is getting this in our fifth and sixth grade at the high school, getting it in our high school, because we're establishing a program, we're establishing roots here because we have a vision of what we want to do down the road. And it's not, I, I just don't see, it's either we're all in or we're not going to do it from my perspective. And I think that by establishing a program, by being all in, that's going to generate more, like, pride around town, it's going to generate local businesses wanting to donate into our program. So I think, I understand the rationale from a fiscal perspective of doing half, doing the Hartman here and then doing the...
But that lets the community get involved also, by, by getting them up and running, but not fully funding everything. That way, the community can come back and say, okay, I'd like to purchase this piece of equipment for there.
Right, so I, so I mean...
Funding it is the teacher.
Right, but also, there's a million-dollar deficit for next year.
We don't have a budget.
That is like, that is scary.
That's the scary part. I mean, as a, as a conservative businesswoman, I could not run my business like that if I didn't have, know what was coming.
Well, part of it also is, if, if we have something to say that our school is, we're on a pedestal because we have this kind of program. Well, part of it also is, if we have something to say that our school is, we're on a pedestal because we have this kind of program. That, we can, I mean, I'm not saying this is just like my personal opinion, of course. I mean, that's something, that's right, we can raise taxes because we have this great program here in Elwood City. This is something that people are gonna wanna move into. This will raise our property values because more, better people were gonna wanna come live in.
Is it gonna make more people wanna buy houses and be in the Elwood City?
For their kids?
If it sets us apart.
For their kids, I mean, would you rather live in South Fayette and get part of that STEAM program there? Or would you rather come to Elwood City and pay half the price per house and half the property taxes to have the same program here in Elwood City?
They could justify this, where you could justify a thrift, a football field, just saying.
That's on my radar right now.
I agree with Mr. Morella, and I support the proposal.
John, did you happen to check into the Shell Group? I remember not too long ago reading an article where, I think it was Quaker Valley, they got a grant down there.
Yeah, well, actually, I went to Quaker Valley and talked with their principal. The bulk of their funding came from the Grable Foundation. They had a hundred thousand dollars donated from Grable, and they were supposed to match it. And they, they actually even struggled with matching that. So, a lot of their STEAM money comes from there. Our biggest resource right now in Elwood, from just having my eyes on this and trying to work it, will be the local, the banks, and also a couple of the larger company, milling companies that are in the area that are interested in getting kids that have an engineering mind, manufacturing-type background. Those are the companies that are gonna support this for us.
And the Hoyt.
And the Hoyt Foundation, and Mr. Berensfeld. So, you know, there is definitely interest there. We've more than piqued their interest. We just need to get the billboards up and let them name and say, hey, this is blank. Makerspace brought to you, Elwood City Buy. This, you know, they did it at Ambridge, it's Wright Field for the fieldhouse down there. Wright Automotive Group, you know, purchases, and they spend money every year to put that name up there. So, you know, that's just not the way a typical educator thinks. But going into the future here, when we want these fringe things and you're definitely on a shoestring budget, we need to think this way, so.
And she had mentioned, Earl Marshall had mentioned, like, John Eagle has a foundation, CBS has a foundation, Rite Aid, that they all did, which I wasn't aware of, that there's, that there is money out there that, that we might be able to tap into through, and then, of course, the private people. She had mentioned several names there that, you know, she has connections to. And, you know, as a member of the kitchen cabinet, she said she would, you know, be willing to work with us, which she'd already been in your office to say such a thing. So, I mean, I was hopeful to be able to, you know, get us in for what we need and then hopefully build that way so that we're not taking all the cost. But we, we have it going. We've made the commitment, and we're moving forward.
How is this motion going to read?
I don't think they're.
Do you wanna pull the board and ask them how it's going?
Well, we can. You guys, hold the board, let's see how you feel about. Now, has everybody had a chance to look at that? That was, that was mine.
Any more discussion that we'd like to have about it. Because, I mean, they need to know.
Yeah, I need nothing back.
Is there anything you can harvest from the old art room that we're not using? Is there anything that's there?
I took cabinets off the wall and not in Perry.
Like I said, I, I foresee, I mean, I think the biggest commitment that the board needs to make is for the teacher because that's where the money is for us, and that increases yearly, of course. But, you know, I, I think this is, you know, a direction that we need to head because, you know, we may be at the beginning now, but in a year from now, we're gonna be right in the middle of the pack because everybody's gotta be trying to do the same thing. But I'd like to see us, you know, make the commitment to the teacher and the space and get, get the minimums in there so that they are up and running, and then let the community kind of help us out. And that's my personal vision. But pulling the board to see what you guys are for or against, I guess, and.
Like Mr. Newpower and Mr. Morella, I support the original proposal by the administration to go through with it. I do believe this is our commitment towards education, which is our prime directive. I've been on the board long enough to know about budgets, deficits, everything else. I understand all that. As far as driving up community support, this would let the entire community know that we are behind this. The school system is only one part of making the community more attractive, it's a big part. But we're limited on what we can do, but this is one of the things we can do. But even throw that out, our main commitment is to enhance education, to give our students the best opportunity they can have. And this is the way to go, to make a full commitment as the administration proposed it. Everybody knows this is what we're doing here at Elwood. We wanna be at the front of anything new and innovative in education. So I will support it.
So you're not, you're against the smaller amount and letting the community help us fund?
No, not, I said, not, not, you didn't word that properly.
Well, that's, okay, clarify, please.
Not turning down any money from the community. I wanna go ahead with it before we get it. I've been on the board long enough to know if we wait for that, it'll never happen at all. So, we'll make the commitment, and then no one can say we haven't made the commitment. But even regardless of that, I'm voting for it because it's the right thing to do for the students. That's the main thing. It may never cause someone to buy a house in Elwood City. I hope it does, but it may never. But, cause that's only one part. The main thing is, it's a commitment to the students, this is what we need to do.
Mr. Vincelli?
I'll support it.
I support it, but, you know, this being my first time on here, you know, I understand how small business budgets run. And my budget is, you know, I know my budget. It's not, you know, I'm not relying on, so, that's the only thing that would hold me back. I'm for the kids, I'm for being the first. But I'm not for doing it and then a year later thinking, holy crap, you know, we don't have the money, we didn't get what we thought. We gave this commitment, now what do we do?
Right. And while we're thinking about this, the other proposal was out there that Mr. Keely, that we need to be considering alongside of it is, you know, hiring back a teacher in the elementary or not, so that's a big consideration.
So we're talking two teachers.
Well, at this moment, we're talking just about this, but that's something else you have to keep in your head. That that's still looming out there.
And then we have a broken furnace at Perry.
There's always something that's gonna break.
Yeah, we have all those.
We do have all those things.
And I, I appreciate you being a businesswoman and understanding that, somewhere you do that. But we still have a commitment and a responsibility for education.
I agree.
Where in the business world, you have a bottom line that drives you.
I agree. We still have a responsibility to keep the kids warm and to keep them educated with their education.
That's all part of the education thing.
I get it, but this is also extra.
Yeah. And what I say is, when you come down to what we're going to do so much, if we run our school like that, that's what we always will be. We won't be on the edge. There won't be any incentive for anyone to wanna come here because we're just always gonna do right, whatever's practical. I would commend the administration for this coming up with a vision. Sorry, Mr. Morella.
No, it's okay, I was just.
For having a vision. And I'm willing to, I'll commit my vote to that vision.
So, Mrs. Woodhead, are you committed to the package as it is or a scaled-down package?
A scaled-down package. I'm committed to it, I'm for it, but a scaled-down package.
Right, I understand. Mr. Morella?
I'm okay with as it is, as it was presented.
I'm concerned that we don't have a state budget, but I do agree, like Leroy said, we have to invest in the kids. And I've seen with my grandkids firsthand.
That's wonderful.
Their excitement and showing, showing what they've done. And constantly talking about what they've done. I could go for it the way it is, but I do have concerns as far as raising taxes and the fact that we don't have a state budget.
Mrs. Pan, if I could just, I totally understand that. However, if we depend on the professional politicians in Harrisburg, we'll never get it. We will never get it.
I understand that.
Right, but we are going to get it because we are going to put the commitment into getting the teacher. But I'm still all for doing a, and I'm not saying scale back to nothing. I'm saying make the commitment, but still utilize our community. And that's us going out and doing some, some legwork and some hard work, which Mr. Sobich has been doing for a year or two now. So, I think we're all, I can tell already, we are in agreement that we need to move forward with it. It's just a matter of, do we have to go full-on or can we scale it back just a little bit and work on it as we go? It's still not, it's still a commitment to move forward. I mean, we already have the votes for that. I think at this point.
Well, the other thing you gotta consider, each year, there's gonna be supply costs. It's not just the teacher and the pension and everything, it's a supply cost for the materials.
Right.
Which the money from the, from the outside can continually feed.
One of the, one of the grants that I got is renew more every year. We just have to reapply for it. So that'll help defray the cost of materials. Right now, we're looking at it, eyeballing it for equipment, obviously, but eventually that could help with cost of materials for the lab operation.
But that's just for the high school, right?
Just for the high school right now.
How, what would we need to do to get Hartman Title I? I mean, there seems to be more money for Title I schools, so I'm just kind of curious because that would be a lovely thing. If they were Title I, then we could move things in and out. And there's obviously more opportunity for grants with Title I.
Maybe that's a qualify.
Yeah, I don't think that's possible at this point because you can't, if you've had a reading program, a district reading program in a school, and you have an ad title, and you can't plug Title in. So I'm not sure it's possible. I'll, I'll look into it for sure, but I don't think it's possible. We can't have it at the high school either.
And I understand, this wasn't purchased with title money per se.
No, with a grant, I understand.
Right, under the title spending guidelines, the title money at Perry has really got us the technological infrastructure that has, to me, propelled us to where we are, Chromebooks, iPads, various other things. But that's, that's what Title has done for us. And then, you know, you can't, I can't count on, if we were to make Hartman a Title I school, that suddenly we would be a distinguished Title I school at Hartman and try to get that grant, so.
But it's just the same kids moving through the schools. That's why, you know, to me, that's what I don't understand, and you have those kids that were just in third and fourth grade, two years later, now they're in fifth and sixth. They, you know, same kids moving up through, but.
I think it's, I think it's, I think it hinges on the concept I said earlier. You wanna put your resources towards that reading early, you know, third, fourth grade is the real tipping point. So if you allocate those resources down there and you make that happen, and I've heard Mr. Mancini say it a hundred times, I'm not sure how it goes, but you teach them to read, you know, when they're young, and then they read to learn later.
Mrs. Toman?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, did I, I missed you. I'm sorry, Mr. Gray. Backed it up. I think it's important, I just, the deficit on the proposed budget is scary, not knowing what the state will be giving us. So I don't wanna be in a situation where we're really struggling, maybe the following year to, you know, I don't wanna press that bad. So I, I think maybe we can maybe scale back some things. That's why I'm curious to see what they could.
So, you're for it, scale back? Mrs. Toman?
Ms. Toman? I would be for it at Hartman. But honestly, I can't commit to a whole, the cost of the teacher, the cost of everything else without a budget, without a run. And it's, if it's, and it's following, at this point, it's following along the kids who are already accustomed to it. It's not like the kids who are currently in sixth grade going into seventh grade are skipping, are, are missing out on what they just came from at Hartman. If you're going from Perry and you're moving along to Hartman, you're getting, you know, the same experience continued. And then, as things go on, if we get funding, if we have other support, it'd be great to move it at the high school. But I just can't support the entire thing.
Okay. Mr. Newpower?
Oh, I already said I'm in favor.
For the full?
Absolutely.
Okay. If that was three, including me, would make four sub, or partial, and five moving ahead as stands. So we know we have a go on the vote on Thursday. I don't know how will the proposal read?
The motion would read to go with the full, we would insert the proposal that's been submitted and say, in your folder is a proposal.
Can you hand me that back, Erica?
I know that it would be approved as presented.
Now, have, and everybody has had a chance, you've looked at this completely. Cause I still have to argue with the laser engraver for twelve thousand and five. I don't see that any sixth, fourth and fifth grader, or excuse me, fifth and sixth grader, I don't see, I think that's a lot of money.
I think the motion, Mr. General, is just to fund, like, fifty thousand at Hartman, but not necessarily the individual items of five or six.
Yeah.
So you're, so you're saying that the proposal is fifty-two thousand at Hartman and a hundred and fifty thousand at, or, excuse me, that would be the total for... Well, they have, what, Lincoln total fifty-four plus, so it's almost a hundred thousand for Lincoln. And fifty thousand, basically, if you wanna just kind of split it in that regard, it's a hundred thousand at Lincoln and fifty thousand at Hartman.
I think we also have to trust our administration, too, to be stewards of our money as well, to be responsible and only get what we need and be necess, I mean, it's, it's, it's a matter of, we all gotta be on the same page here. If we're split, it's not going to work. So, I mean, we have five here that are ready to support this program. And it's really, I mean, this administration needs support from us. And if we're gonna be saying, we're gonna limit you on this, or we're gonna limit, they're going out and they're going to get that money. If we approve a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I mean, we might get fifty thousand dollars of that back, if I'm not mistaken, so.
They're gonna spend it all, huh? No, that's what I'm saying. I, they're gonna spend every cent that they can.
There, there won't be a penny in this place. But like, everything that comes in will go directly to the project and to securing the best equipment we can for our students.
But like, at Hartman, I mean, those figures, and granted, he may juggle some of that, but I think, and he said it, he's not gonna turn any money down. So, I mean, to allocate thirty-five instead of fifty, I mean, I guess, you know, to me, every cent counts. It's like, I still want that opportunity to go out and get even more money, more than that fifteen, and, and even bring more, more things in there. But I, I mean, I want it to, I want it to match at least what they're using now because they, you know, he said, you know, they haven't even got things out of boxes there. So, I mean, they're, you know, they're not gonna get through at all, there's so much available.
But you gotta look at the fact, too, that they have to buy the tables and the chairs, which was an expense they didn't.
Right, that is included in there.
Well, I know it's longer, but I mean, the cost.
Yeah, I have a cart out there, I don't know.
A Chromebook cart?
No, like, we have, like shelving, I don't know if I include shelving in that.
Yes, you did, yes, you have shelving on here.
Twelve hundred dollars for shelving, storage bins, and carts.
But like, you know, I said, like, the three D printer, I, I know you pulled the price out, but to me, it's like.
I've seen them cheaper. I don't understand why it costs so much.
Well, that also includes the printing trays and filament. Printing trays were three dollars a piece. If you were cycling, get the machine through for like at-home use, cause basically some of those three D printers would be like non-commercial use. That's really the cost. Basically, we go through a consortium that has the best pricing we can get for a school district, and that's kind of the cost that they're coming in back for us. I'm not saying that we need a Cadillac. Trust me, I drive a Chevy. So, we'll get by with a Chevy if we can get by with a Chevy. But we've gotta allocate the money so that the money's there so that we can put the appropriate equipment in place. I mean, can you make a, a Makerspace for eleven thousand dollars? Yes. Would it be, would it have the functionality you'd want that Frank would have now? So, and the same thing with the high school, you're gonna cycle through seventh through twelfth grades in terms of electives, rotational classes for seventh and eighth graders, there are gonna be a lot of hands in that lab. That equipment needs to stand up and it needs to be quality. I'm just, I don't think we can do it any other way.
But like those Makerspace cabinets, I know for a fact, as we were in there, those screwdrivers, they were already shot and it was halfway through the year. So, I mean, I have to wonder if the quality, if you couldn't go out and get better quality on your own, knowing, he knows now what they utilize. You know, making his own list of things versus buying this pre-done cabinet that you might be able to do much better on your own, purchasing higher quality. That's my, one of my concerns, like I said, if you have a whole bunch of screwdrivers now that are no longer usable, you're gonna restock those, refurnish them.
And like I said, I'll talk to Scott and Matt, and we will make the best decisions we can with, with that. It was a great way to get started with those cabinets. And again, put that in there because that's where we went.
And again, put that in there because that's where we went in the first place. Um, if, if Scott and Matt, really, if Scott thinks that's the way to go, then that's the way I prefer to go, because of the way it starts up. Um, if he thinks we should go another direction, I'll listen to him. Because honestly, we share the torch now as kinda resident experts, and he's gonna be the guy here real soon. He's gonna be the guy that, that has the keys to the Cadillac.
You mean the Chevy?
That you said Chevy.
I, I dream big.
At least you didn't say Hummer.
True, very true. There's a couple steps above, huh? Okay. I'd still like to see it cut back a little bit. I'd like to, to see us being more afraid of moving up board.
We'll have two motions.
Is it two mo, is that what?
One, one motion.
One motion for Hartman? Is that where it's going?
I think it's one motion overall, full. Number five, revised policy 005. Um, the administration is recommending policy 005, organization be revised. The closes a current policy and the recommended revised policy for review. Uh, request that policies be on display until the next board meeting and then be recommended for adoption. Um, and the change to that policy is the committees, um, changing them to, um, if you looked at it, that was the only change, was going to four committees, revenue, finance, personnel, athletics, facilities, and communications, education, and student affairs. So that'll be on for first reading on Thursday. Some informational items, um, I gave each of you a blue binder. Um, in that blue binder, um, if you remember from last year, we decided to combine policies 300, 400, and 500, which was professional administrative and non-certified staff. Um, that was a recommendation from PSBA. Um, there's about 51 policies. Um, so in order to rack in my brain to figure out how to get all these done at once, I figured I'd just give you a copy of each one of those. The first 11 pages, um, in the, in the graph there are the changes with the old policy. Um, the changes they made from the old policy to the new policy. They just kinda give you a, a cheat sheet there for each one, so you can refer to. Um, some of it majorly changed, some have just some minor changes to include language for, you know, all three groups. Um, the idea behind this was to give this to you, so you could look at it, mark it up, write on it. If you have any questions, contact me or Mr. DeCaro, or I'll contact Mr. DeCaro to find out legal. Uh, but these are PSBA recommended policies. Um, so you can kinda go along and, and kinda look at what they are recommending. Um, the idea then would be to come back in March and discuss them. If there's any discussion or changes, that would be like the first reading, and then approve them in April. So you have about two months to kinda look at them, say a couple of weeks, three, you know, time to look at each one of them. Um, and we, next meeting in February, if you have any questions, we can discuss them then also. But you get the idea. The very back of it, after the 300, you see another tab. Those are about four new policies that they are recommending also. One is on career in both tech. Um, next one is on child abuse, some changes to child abuse policy, which is rather lengthy. Um, then one is a new policy on professional and adult student boundaries, probably coming out of the Plum case that's going on. And I believe the last one is, oh, that was it, just those three. Um, so those are just kinda some new policy, policies that they're recommending, or some changes to ones that we already exist. So not into 300, 400, 500 category, just outside of that. So that's the plan. Take those home, look at them. Um, and again, if you have any question, you can contact me, and I'll do my best to get the answer for you. Talked about a board retreat on the 20th of January. I know later on, there's a question about that. We do have to have a special meeting on the 27th. Um, question of the board is, do you want to do the special meeting or approve the preliminary budget? It would be just one motion item, and then also have the board retreat that one night. So we're out one night instead of two. If you can make it on the 27th, let me know, like, right now, or, you know, before we leave today, so that we can plan just to have the 27th as the quick vote on the preliminary budget, and then also board retreat after, so.
I could tell you right now, I can't make it on the 20th.
The 20th, probably the 27th?
I can make it on the 20th.
The 20th, I'll be in line.
So the 27th is better for everybody? So we'll just combine it? That way, we're killing two birds with one stone.
So cancel the 20th?
Cancel the 20th. We'll do the preliminary budget 27th. What I'd like to do though, also, is do that at 6, if that's possible, just so we can have more time. We, you know, vote in first 10 minutes, five minutes, and then have more time for the retreat after. Board picture will be this Thursday, 6:45. Also, my midpoint review was in your packet. I'm not sure how you wanna handle that, but possibility, you know, discuss that on the 27th also at the meeting. Um, after you fill it out and discuss it, I'm up here to let us spend some time today.
I was gonna say, either today or Thursday, we'll need to, to sit down as a group and discuss it, so that we can go over, go over with him on the 27th. So better to wait till Thursday after the meeting to discuss superintendent. It gives us some time to look at it and make some notes. So plan on staying after on Thursday.
We talked about number five, new business. Uh, Ms. Petrelli suggested that we change some locations for some of the board meetings. Um, the next board meeting, she would like to be, have held at Perry, lower intermediate. You know, I, I imagine we're only talking about the Thursday meeting, correct? About the Monday?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, and then May, have it at Hartman, and then North Side in September. Um, just to kinda change some venues and locations, give you, the board, a chance to see some, to see the buildings and so on. So that'll be a motion also. Do we wanna hold number two for the retreat, the consent agenda to discuss?
Um, we can't.
Um, just to kinda get more detail. Number two was an idea that we have a consent agenda, um, instead of reading every motion, um, kinda lumping motions together. Um, instead of reading all, every one of them, um, just to kinda speed meetings up on Thursdays. I don't know if Mr. DeCaro has anything to add to that, as far as legality of consent agendas.
It's, it's permitted.
Yeah, so. You're permitted to do that.
Do we need to vote on that, or is that just something we can adopt?
I don't think, you know, I don't think you need to vote on, do you? Do we do a consent agenda?
No, just, if you're gonna do it at that meeting, just, uh, you would say, like, we'll take items, you know, one, two, three, and four. Is, you know, vote on those as a block. If nobody's opposed, then if not, you can just vote on at that meeting.
Mike.
Because it may vary from meeting to meeting. I mean, you don't know what, what blocks necessarily, how the agenda's gonna fall out.
Well, this is new to, to us. So my biggest concern when Joe had, excuse me, Mr. Mancini had mentioned this to me, was that, um, letting the public know. Because when they're here, and if they are not at Monday's meeting, and they come in the Thursday's meeting, then they don't know what's going on. We just voted on 10 items, and they don't have a clue what it is. So, um.
They'll have an agenda.
Put it up on the screen?
Um, that was one of the suggestions that we had thought about.
But I mean, if you just put it, you know, just put it on there, so I mean, just.
Um, no, we have to shift.
At any time, a, a member could ask to have them separate.
Right.
Right, if there's a question upon, on one or another. Um, one of the other things that we had talked about was the, uh, putting the, um, agenda on the website, which I believe it's up now. So there is a bullet point agenda on there, so that the public knows what we will be discussing, what we'll be voting on. So it will change from Monday's to Thursday's meeting, depending on what we, we've tabled something or so on. So hopefully, we can get the word out via the press with a little help, um, that we are going to start with the consent agenda in February, so that if anybody has any question, then we can try to help them through that. And they can look at our website now, because they will be posted on the website.
On that, the item number one, board meeting location changes. I think we also have talked about a second meeting in September or October.
Right.
So is there a date that you wanna pick the?
Yeah, um, yes. Um, just so everybody knows, um, this past Thursday, I actually was asked, um, and I came in and I helped construct the agenda. So I was a part of it. So if there's ever a topic that somebody wants to have put on the agenda, they can just email me, text me, however, or Joe, and, um, I will be helping them build the agenda. It is on the website, like I just said. Um, we'd also like to go to, um, instead of mailing the packets out, to a secure website, if I have this correct. Do you wanna tell them a little bit more about?
We just kinda, we discussed it before. Um, you would get an email saying that the agenda is now available Thursday. Instead of waiting for it to come in the mail, um, you would just have this password login, and you'd be able to see the entire communicator that would come out. So you'd have access to it, um, right away. So, um, just to kinda cut down on mailing costs and also the speed at which you get that communicator. By the time we build it, um, that Thursday before, um, by the end of the day, is when we mail it. So we would just email everybody, hey, it's available, log in, and you can see it all, um, right then.
Does anybody have a problem with that? We were concerned with Mr. Fazoli not having a paper copy. Would you be okay with online? You can move forward with that. Let's see. Um, adding a meeting in September and October. Um, Mr. Morel and I were a little concerned with having two months meeting only. Having one meeting in September and one meeting in October was going to be a little tough, getting all the, um, work accomplished. So we thought about adding a meeting in one of those month or both, depending on what the board felt. Um, and we're talking about Tuesday or having it following a week, a week after, or Tuesday. So we're looking for some board input on, um, adding the meeting and what date would be better. Anybody else?
I think it's something that we can talk about on Thursday, maybe if you guys wanna look at your schedules and whatnot.
All right, you already went over committees. Uh, I've also asked, um, the school, um, now be responsible for videoing the meetings and getting them up on the website. Um, hopefully, there won't be any objections to that. Um, I feel like the, the community, when it's bad or cold outside, this way, they have access to it and up on our website along with the agenda. So they'll be taking that over, um, and the meeting's hopefully going on there. Uh, another, uh.
I think you need a policy to do that.
That's next, policy.
Even to do the videotaping. So, um, you know, we'd wanna make it clear that we own the video. Um, doesn't constitute official minutes. Um, how long are you gonna retain it? Because it's a public record. So, um, I guess with digital storage, it's easier to, you know, keep a lot of, a lot of meetings stored, but how?
I think a year. I would say that, that year. I don't know. Does anybody have any thoughts on? Uh, I mean, I guess this is one of the things, you know, adding a policy on specifics.
Correct, so that's why I think you need a, um, if the school's gonna do the recording, you need to figure out some of those things that would be in a policy.
So that, is that the, the, the major thing, is how long do we keep it?
How long would be the? Yeah, would be probably, I printed out from, I forget which district, but. That's very good, a lot of, here's, they had a couple different policies, but.
Does PSBA have one?
Uh, I haven't looked up. I don't know. I could look. That didn't look like a PSBA policy, but.
This doesn't, yeah.
I guess you'll have to figure out the technology of how it's.
Which is another policy I'd like to.
You know, overseeing that, I guess.
Mr. Mancini also spoke to you about, um, another policy about, um, having us be a part of the meetings, um, absent members, participation, um, so that we have something in policy, so that everybody, if somebody's away and they wanna participate by phone or by computer, um, do we have something that we can look at, so that we can adopt something, so everybody knows the guidelines?
Yeah, I mean, there's, I don't know if PSBA has one for that, I think. Here's one from Ken McMillan.
Would anybody like to look at these policies that he has? So we can draft something, or more comfortable letting him draft something, and then us showing you the draft policy?
Well, can we check and see if PSBA has?
PSBA may have one about, um, the telephoning.
Absence, yeah.
So you have to, um, the absent member has to be able to hear everything.
Oh, here it is.
They have to be able to speak, we may, we have to be able to hear them, and they have to be able to participate contemporaneously. So there can't be a delay. Like, if you're doing it on the computer, um, say like Skype or something, there can't be a delay. And then you have to decide, so, um, can it be used at any time? Does it have to be certain conditions, emergencies only? Um, you know, does it have to be a certain notice provided by the person that's gonna participate telephonic? Because, um, what you wanna avoid is, um, when there are issues that may be more contentious than others, then somebody's not here, and, and there's gonna be a fight over, was that person participated by telephone or not? And, um, you know, it has to be for the whole meeting, so that person has to.
Hang on for the whole entire time?
They can't be just there for one vote on, you know, one motion. But, um, I think Conemaugh, do you know, I think I maybe said it before, I think it was Conemaugh had one. I mean, we could put something together.
This is, this one is, and it even has a comment in here about, it can only happen on two occasions, when conditions or circumstances justify such an additional remote participation. So we need to have basically terms on what everybody would agree to.
What you're, what you want the conditions to be.
What we would like the conditions to be.
Mr. DeCaro, does that mean until we have a policy, a person cannot participate by phone?
Well, it's up to the board. I mean, if you, I think we've had, have had permitted that to happen.
I may have to, I probably will have to do that on Thursday. I'm scheduled to work that day. And, uh, for the past 12 years, uh, person Jay Wiley, most people may not know, made it possible for me to miss very few school board meetings, but God bless him, he has retired.
Lucky him.
I've consulted you. So.
Will you be able to, to be a part of the whole meeting at work?
Well, that's what I'm asking, Mr. DeCaro.
Well.
You have to be a part of the whole meeting.
We don't, you don't have to have a policy for you to be able to do it, but you, um, for it not to be a Sunshine Act violation, you have to participate the whole meeting.
Well, I, I'm assuming if it starts at 7 o'clock, it's gonna be quite a bit briefer than tonight's meeting was. So there's a possibility. I'm not saying I can't, but.
So what happens if he makes it through part of it and doesn't make it through?
And I can't vote, right, is that correct?
But then that means everything you voted on becomes not.
Not necessarily. Um, wouldn't invalidate necessarily if, uh, would he voted on at the beginning.
It'd be the same if somebody had to leave for an emergency, right?
Correct, somebody got sick or had an emergency, it wouldn't invalidate their. But the, the reason for the policy to, to require is so that somebody doesn't just.
Vote for some one part of it, right. Yes, that's why I think you have to be a part of the whole meeting. That's why we need to have a policy in place, so that we all understand what the rules are, and if you wanna participate in that regard, that it's spelled out, because.
But you can't, I mean, someone could say, I'm gonna be there for the whole meeting, and then, you know, hang up. That doesn't avoid all their votes prior. But, you know, I guess we can deal with that, whether you don't give that person permission the next time around, but. This is why, this is why the telephonic participation, I think, it's come up before, I mean, I think last year or the year before. But, you know, my general feeling on it is to avoid it, because it just creates.
There's too many issues.
And, and, you know, Leroy's working, it's a, obviously it's not a problem, but, you know, let's say you're firing somebody. You know, something contentious could be, and it's, there's going to be a fight and an argument and potentially a lawsuit over whether, you know, you should have done that or not. So it's almost kind of like you, you know, this slippery slope, you open the door a little bit and who knows? So I just tread cautiously with it if you do it.
I can see where that, those issues become.
I'd like to see PSBA's policy if they have one.
Do we have access to the policies, just the administrators have the access to the extra policies that aren't yet in? Okay, we'll have to come in and look into that if we want to sit down with you. Which reminds me, I'm not sure if all of you know, there is online training, but the school district pays for it. They probably went over it with the three new, the new, uh, for the new trainers, the new, the new member training. But for the old members, if you would like to go on, there is a code that Joe has, excuse me, Mr. Mancini has. Then you can go through all the videos and it also has the videos from the conference, which they had a lot of really good topics there. I think the only other thing that I have, and I guess this would still be under new business, is public relations. I mentioned it a little bit here. Really want to get the community involved with the school district so we can get some people at the meeting. Let the parents know where we stand, be more proactive than reactive, we've talked about it. So, and I'm sure we'll touch base more at the, the board retreat with that.
I talked to somebody-
For public relations?
That I know who does PR work. And she said the way you should think about setting it up is having some kind of part-time or hourly retainer. For somebody who wants to do this part-time work for the district, it's, it wouldn't be a full-time position. And it would be basically us assigning that person-
Something.
A specific job and they would be getting paid a certain hourly rate. So that's just what she said, the rates were flexible, that depends mostly in part, probably based on experience. So she didn't give me a full number for her, but that's just the information that I gathered.
And you even mentioned maybe internships, if there are any that anybody knows of that we can look into. Get some young eager person out there in college that needs a little bit of time and a big project, that would be great. The last thing, we had left off at the old meeting with, I had mentioned a budget, a budget committee. And since the new committees, there isn't one, I guess this is where our little ad hoc committee would come to play. So I'm guessing I'm looking for volunteers from anybody here that would like to be a part of the budget committee. And sit down and go through the process with the administration. Do we have any volunteers? Mr. Morel? Mrs. Gray? Mrs. Tillman, would you be interested in?
If you call me Ms.
Stop with the Mrs., sorry, Ms. Tillman. I know, and I hate that when they call me Mrs., so I should never do that. So then we have our budget committee. Anybody else interested? There's room for one more? No? Takers?
If the committee's going to deliberate and discuss any agency business or render advice to the board, it's, it has to be advertised. Public doesn't get to participate in committee meetings, so there's no public visitor comments, but it has to be advertised in a public meeting.
So our question was if they're fact finding or sitting in with a meeting and they're not deliberating, they're just in with the administration, is that something that needs to be?
If you're just receiving information, but if you're going to-
If they're going to meet and discuss specifics, then it needs to be a public meeting. But if they're just in with the administration finding facts.
Mr. Zerron's just meeting with them to explain how he puts the budget together, that's informational. But if you're discussing the budget and what should we cut, what should we not cut, then it's going to be a public meeting. My concern is that your informational meeting will turn into discussion, so.
Okay.
So you got to be very careful about that.
Okay, so is there some kind of guidelines that we can get just in general for the committees? So that we can distinguish between what needs to be public, what needs to be private, or what can be private?
If you're just going to sit, not say anything and have the administration tell you something, that's information. If you're going to talk amongst yourselves, it's a public meeting. I mean, there's nothing really out there that defines it other than that, I mean, that's how I would, the easiest way to look at it.
And the committees all need to have a, what were you telling me? A committee, a chair? There were three things.
Agenda?
Yeah, agenda and then the, I don't know if I have any notes from our meeting. Backwards. The procedures we had just talked about.
I don't know if an ad hoc committee needs, does an ad hoc committee need that? Or just like an agenda? That's what we're talking about, that's what we're doing.
You got, yeah, you're on minutes, if it's a public meeting, you're going to have minutes, you're going to have agenda.
But if it's an ad hoc, like, I'm not sure where you were.
I just, I don't see the necessity for a mission and vision angles and stuff like that, but agenda, minutes, that kind of stuff would probably be necessary.
Okay, I see where you're at. Just missed a part of that. The only other thing was what Mrs., watch myself, McCollum had mentioned about, and we've talked about that, the policy on our volunteer. I thought that was on here.
It's on the update.
On the update, oh, okay, we didn't go to that. You have information for us?
So with the volunteers, that's somebody providing obviously unpaid services. That has direct contact with children or are supervising a child or children. Then they have to have the state child abuse clearance, this Pennsylvania State Police criminal history report. If they've lived in Pennsylvania for 10 years, they don't need the FBI report, but otherwise they do. And then they have to certify that they would not be disqualified under one of the listed prohibited offenses. Or that they weren't found that as a perpetrator in a child abuse case. So that's what the law says. Our policy makes all volunteers get clearances regardless of they have direct contact or not. PSBA kind of follows the, what the new law says in terms of if, if you've lived here for 10 years, you don't need the FBI clearance. I know in talking with Mr. Mancini, there was some discussion whether some volunteers that have direct contact, like coaches, would get all three. But other volunteers may not get all three, which I would not recommend. Because once you're saying that some volunteers should have all three, I don't know how you defend a case. Why you explain the other volunteer didn't get all three. I mean, if you're acknowledging that you're, it's better to have volunteers get all three, then you got to do it all the way across the board. To be in the best defensible position if something would happen, so. I would not treat classes of volunteers having direct contact differently. They all have to be treated the same.
But the state now does not require the fingerprinting for?
For the FBI, although we've come across, I, I don't know why they don't do that. Because there could be many circumstances where they're just presuming that I didn't get in trouble anywhere else, other than Pennsylvania. But there could be many circumstances and we've seen it where employees had something other than in Pennsylvania. So I think you're, you're in the best position to defend a potential lawsuit is if all volunteers get all. Even that's more than the law says and you're allowed to do more than what the law says.
But is the purpose of them, us relieving it, is it financial or, I mean, what is the purpose that they don't want it?
It's a hardship for, for families to, to get that, to make the time to go to the specific places and the financial burden. Now the other two are free. The child's one and the state police, they're actually free now. The fingerprint is the only one that's a cost. And I believe, did you get the?
It's $27.
Yeah.
So it's $7 more than it was.
Unless you want to make a point where they charge you an extra five.
I mean, the way, the way I also see it is, I'm part of PIAA and that requires all three clearances too. And that's, you know, if the other two are free now, I mean, I understand that it does hurt, I mean, potential volunteers. But it's still part of due diligence on our part to make sure and certify that they don't have other offenses other than outside Pennsylvania. So I can see both sides of the argument, but protect ourselves and our interests and our kids. I, I'm not just going to trust it to somebody saying, I didn't do that.
But it's 10 years, they say it's redundant if you live in the state for 10 years.
Oh, I can tell the truth.
If you had an offense in a different state.
Correct.
11 years.
I've lived in the last 30 years, I've lived in six states, so.
Right. I just, I think it needs to be a policy across the board for everyone, no question, you have all three clearances, end of story.
Can the boosters organization, if somebody signs off that they, it's a financial hardship, the boosters pay for it?
It's up to the boosters, they do, they can pay for it, even if it's not a financial hardship, if they want, I guess. It's up to the boosters.
Did you get the email from, yeah, that was, you know, one of the biggest reasons is she's, she's, Mrs. McCollum said, sent that. That you guys went, PTO went from, I think it was 565 volunteers down to 72. It was a phenomenal amount.
Make them wonder why they wouldn't want the fingerprints taken.
It is a hassle, it really, it's a hassle.
It's not, it's not a fun thing to do, but I mean, it's part of.
And if you work and it's, I think it's just, it's not a matter of they're hiding something, I think it's just a matter of some may be paying for it. And two, just getting the time to get somewhere to get it done, I think is maybe the issue.
Where in here do they, I mean, when I did mine, I had to go to the police department, where do they go now?
Cranberry.
UPS store.
Yeah, UPS store in Cranberry, you go to CCIS in Newcastle.
We brought them here for our staff. We actually brought them here.
Can you do it with one in Beaver County too?
Probably. I mean, maybe if you're bringing somebody and you could coordinate with like the PTO.
Oh, just because it's closer.
There's time, like it's time you pay for, like we pay for that, like, like you pay.
But my point, I mean, is it required for every volunteer in the district? Like every volunteer, coaching, anything has it, is that, is that the policy in the school, right?
As of now, right.
Gets all three?
My church requires it. Our church.
Our, yeah. Sorry.
Well, there was some discrepancy, I guess, on, on certain coaches not having all their clearances and that was one of the.
But this is for the volunteers to the district. So if somebody, like we approved Special Olympics, right, to use the building. So we don't make all the coaches at Special Olympics get a clearance because they're not providing services to the district. They're just using our building. So this is only volunteers to the district.
Right, so like if something happens with one of those Special Olympics coaches, that's on Special Olympics, they can no way come back to our district.
Because generally you're-
All of our sports, school-sponsored sports, coaches have to have.
Correct, I'm talking about just entities, you know, or groups that use our facilities, we're not talking about their people.
With the elementary, it came up with the elementary basketball coaches and I was asked about that.
And.
We don't sponsor that sport.
Correct.
You say that, but the coach directly has contact with, with them and he's the one that puts the, the request for the facility in. So under volunteers, if there's a direct request, they're, they're working with the coach, it becomes a volunteer, not a facility request.
I don't think the high school coach has anything to do with.
He put the request in for the elementary.
What?
For use of the facilities.
For Bantam basketball to use the facilities?
With the boosters.
It's the, it's part of the boosters. He may put it in because it's, it's boosters should run.
But the question there was how much control our varsity basketball coach has over that program. So if he's directing the Bantam coaches, then I would say there are volunteers. If he's not, I mean, you know, if they're just, hey, we'll run your offense, whatever, if that makes sense for basketball, then, you know, it's a separate program. So that one depends on, I guess, how much control our coach, I don't know what the answer is to that, but.
Yeah, perhaps we'll have to look at that.
Correct, I think when we talked about that, that's what I said, is that if he's, the more control he has over that program, then the more we should be made to get clearances. If he just, you know, shows up to, you know, watch here or there and isn't really directing anything, then they're a separate pro, separate group.
But with, with the state requiring all the clearances being played for any volunteer for coaching, can't we just request these, these, these entities?
Well, that's, that's the question.
Relay for life?
But these are, these are our kids, I mean, these are-
They're going to be working with our kids there too, relay for life.
Here's the liability, here's the liability issue though. So we only have a duty to get the clearances for volunteers rendering services to the district. We could go beyond that for everybody using our facilities. But once we undertake the duty, even if we didn't have to do it, we have to fulfill it 100% or we open ourselves up to liability. I think it becomes unworkable. So like, say the arts, like, you know, I don't know how you would ever determine that everybody that used the facility that you approved for that group had a clearance. So it's, it's, you don't want to take on that duty that you don't otherwise have, because I don't think you could fulfill it.
We just approved Little League baseball and they all have to get their own clearances, but we don't collect them. Little League baseball takes care of that action. So those parents who signed their kid up for Little League baseball are aware that that coach got clearances. But if we start collecting them, what if they have something, are we going to then approve or disapprove if that person had something under clearance like we've just gone through? Or when it's their entity, you know, so there's a mingling of.
Well, what worries me is they're in our buildings. That's what, you know, you have these, these coaches in our buildings that we're allowing them in and that, you know, they should have their clearances if they're coaching kids, that's state law.
Generally, you don't have any liability if somebody commits a criminal act on your property.
The liability's not there.
The liability's not there.
The only thing we would have to change with policy nine 16 is that they did make it from 36 months to 60 months for all, so.
Renew.
To renew, so they changed that law in July, so we passed it before that, now we've got to switch it to the 60 month for all volunteers.
Hate to say this, but I don't think you did the personnel executive session items yet.
No, we haven't. We know.
Thanks for the reminder.
Anybody forgot.
Thanks, John.
Let you know.
We'll go back to the visitors, any comments? Question?
Talking about the art club, it's been in Elwood for a long time. I would say the majority of the people that belong to that are taxpayers of Elwood. I know they're having some difficulty with their finances, but I think if I'm not mistaken, we don't have any kind of industrial arts program at the school anymore, correct? That's a lot, so this would be a nice outlet for some of them to get. Pete Wadich, I mean, I know there's a ceramic shop over in Elwood, they get a lot of people over there just to do ceramics. But to be exposed to more forms of art, and they have the jury art show, which is festival, and what with the community spirit, everything else. I mean, I don't think it's that much to the school district to be able to. I mean, I don't think it's that much to the school district to be able to use its methods, facilities, just to, like, actually.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay, and we're going to adjourn for executive session?
Personnel.
For personnel.
You always have to announce why.